Good evening. Welcome to the September 20th zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Per the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are being audio and video recorded this evening. The first item on our agenda is 18 Union Street special permit which will be continued. And we need to vote to continue that. Chris, if you can make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for Four Oaks Corporation for a special permit pursuant of MGL Chapter 40, Section 9 amended in Section I for B1A of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow parking and vehicle circulation areas less than 50 feet from an adjacent parcel that is within a residential zoning district. Property is located 18 Union Street, assessors map 14, block 41, block 21 of the B1 zoning district. Like to make a motion to continue that public hearing until future date, awaiting the planning board's continued review of that project.
I think we need a date, sir.
No, because I think you can post it, as long as you post it two weeks, you'll be all right.
I'll have to re-advertise.
You haven't advertised yet. You want to advertise it for a date already?
We've already opened it.
Yeah, I know.
So it's been extended.
We'll do it till the 15th then, if you want. Want to make it to the 15th of November?
Of November?
Yeah. We don't know when the zoning, when is the planning board going to, when do we, do we know when they're going to?
I know they're hearing it on 9/27, but I don't know how many times they have to meet about it.
Yeah. I mean, I could put it to the 18th, and we can redo it again at that point. Do you want to do that?
Okay. You don't want to do October?
Okay. So we will, we'll amend that a motion to continue it till the 18th of October at 7:00 PM. October, not November.
The 18th of October.
18th of October. They're hearing on 9/27, and the 18th, we should be able to address it.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We cannot, yes, please. We can't begin Bishop's hearing until 7:15, so why don't we take a minute, look through our minutes, August 16th and August 22nd, get those done.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes of August 16th, 2017 of the zoning Board of Appeals as identified.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes of August 22nd, 2017 of the zoning Board of Appeals as amended with the following changes. First of all, the chairman was present on the 22nd. At the bottom of page one, the word threes versus three. The bottom of page two, last paragraph, Mr. Quintel, is there a specific type of plan, not plant? As amended. Anybody second?
Don, can you second that, please?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I did want to make an announcement tonight. If you are here for the hearing for 144 Secor, that has been rescheduled until, Amy, what's the date, the 11th?
Yes.
10/11.
October 11.
I don't know if anyone's here for that hearing, but that's been rescheduled to 10/11. Ready, Counselor? Okay. We've got several topics to get through this evening. Architectural review, tying up some traffic topics, stormwater, mounding analysis, and if we have time, maybe the waivers. We'll see how the evening goes. Glenn, if you want to, well, Bishop, did you want to make some comments before we get started tonight, or any updates or anything?
Let me take a quick example. Yeah, if you tell me what it is, yeah. So what is it on?
I was actually expecting you guys to make a presentation. I'm not familiar with all your issues. The whole issue is, I mean, comments about the plan and specific elevations of the units, and you address how you change them, and I can.
Use the mic.
Glenn, can you grab that mic so everyone can hear you? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Christopher Agassino, counsel for the applicant. Going into tonight, it was my understanding that there were two major issues. One of them was massing with respect to blank faces of buildings towards the street, and the other issue was the garage doors. And in the discussion, it focused more on the garage doors, and it really came down to that issue. And I think Bishop can describe how he's planning to proceed with the garage doors. But as far as the, the blank areas that sort of face the street, I think we solved it by proposing to add some windows to break up just the blank faces.
I would agree. I just, it's not really appropriate for me to present your design, so if you guys walk through, then I can say where it does or doesn't address the concern I have.
There was, excuse me, there was an email that your architect sent to Glenn. I don't know if you were copied on that, Amy, that had building elevations on it?
There were.
I think that was.
I think that was yesterday afternoon.
Right.
I don't know if you guys have.
I think it was yesterday.
No, and again, the, the comments, and I'm looking at the August 9th letter, which really narrowed the number of comments, and I believe there were three open issues. So we weren't planning on a full discussion regarding those three issues when they primarily just related to breaking up big blank spaces. And I think we've, we've shown in the latest drawings, and we've agreed to break up those blank spaces. So we've, I didn't even know the design review was going to be present tonight to vet those limited issues. I think, bottom line, we've agreed to break up those big blank walls. And I think if the board's peer review consultant just blesses the, the plans that we put before the board for approval, then that would solve it. So do you, if we don't have the plans, then?
Can you explain what they are?
Glenn, you want to respond to that?
Well, the only concern I have is they hadn't done anything. I spoke with the architect two days ago, reiterated my concerns that if this didn't get addressed, that it was going to delay things yet another month. And then they revised drawings that day, sent them to me, so I don't even know if they've sent them to you yet. I'm just at a bit of a loss that nobody's going to.
Have you received the revised drawings?
I received them this morning.
This morning. Have we received the revised drawings?
I had a chance to look at them.
I don't believe so.
But it's kind of hard for me, I mean, I expected that they were going to either have boards or graphics up here that I could explain to you where things did and didn't meet the requests I've made.
I think we talked about this at the last meeting. We had a real, in-depth conversation about getting information to Glenn, and we said within one week of the last meeting.
Yes.
Elevations.
Yes, actually.
And some other information. And he's getting them this morning, or this afternoon. I mean, not to beat a dead horse, but we talked about this. And this shouldn't be happening. We're wasting this man's time. It's not acceptable. It delays the hearings. I have to bring him back again now, or Mike does if he chooses, to review this. Because you didn't, your people didn't follow up within the seven days, which we stated at the August 10th meeting. Right in the minutes, within 10 days, because the prior month, we had the same issue. I don't understand it, Chris.
If I may?
Go ahead.
Again, we were focused on the major civil engineering issues. We talked about groundwater mounding. We, we talked about traffic reports. We also talked about emergency access was a, was a hot button issue at the last hearing. This particular issue, put it on me, just flew right under the radar, because I thought these were pretty basic architectural comments that could be resolved by a commitment to, again, break up these big blank faces. I, I didn't know that this was something that was going to require a subsequent public hearing for review on, since we had some of the other major issues. All of the other documentation was in on September 12th. The revised plan set is dated as of September 8th. As far as the architectural issue, my understanding was that there was a lot of back and forth about the garage doors. And that issue was not resolved to the satisfaction of the board's architectural peer review consultant until recently, because frankly, the design team said, it's our design, you know, we design these things, we'll break up the massing, but we're going to go with this particular proposal. So I did not think that this was one of the items that needed to be vetted seven days in advance, because the comments in my mind were limited. But just as far as the other hot, you know, the major items in terms of civil site review, not that I am downplaying the importance of architectural review, but it, it just didn't seem as though that was the type of issue that was included in that, get it to us seven days in advance of the hearing. So all the other information was, there was a hiccup on the transmission of the site triangles. So that was logistics and an email snafu, which again, you know, that, that was more of a snafu than anything else. But as far as this package, I didn't know that was included in the, in the seven days prior, so apologies for that.
All right. Thank you. Glenn, what do you need to sign off?
Well, what I'm thinking I can do.
What can you do?
If you jump onto the other stuff, I have the emails that I got this morning in my phone. I can forward them to you here, so that then you can get those files and put them up, so we can actually have a discussion.
Okay. Let's do that. Good idea. Thank you. All right. While that's going on, let's, Jason, let's finish up with some traffic information that's been provided to you.
Good evening. Jason Floyd of Beta Group. So the, at the last meeting, the remaining issue from the traffic review was associated with the sightlines looking to the right. And we're, based on ASHTO requirements, that you measure 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the travelway. And so based on that measurement, the sightlines were crossing into the abutting property to the south. What I had recommended was that they do a 10-foot back from the edge of pavement, which is a common traffic engineering standard, and see if those sightlines would still cross that abutting property. Because if it did, then we would need to either talk about relocating the driveway or get a sightline easement. At this time, they've provided us with that updated plan with the 10 feet back, and the sightlines do not cross that abutting property to the south. So I'm good. So that's, that was the last remaining item for the traffic review.
Is that, is that this plan that's in our packets?
Well, I just received it tonight at 6:00.
Yeah, that's that one.
I have additional copies here if you need them.
That looks like it, Dan, yes. So the area in question was like right down in this corner here, and it's no longer crossing that property.
Anyone want to see this?
Jim's got some 11 by 17s also.
All right. Yeah, bring them, yeah, we'll take them.
So I can prepare a final letter if the board wants that.
Okay. If you could do that, that'd be great.
So the site triangle is the?
Anyone want to see these?
The hatched area.
Hatched area.
That's correct.
And that's 10 feet back from what, the paved surface?
Yeah, so it's the edge of the paved area. So, so it's, what it really is in reference to is that 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the traveled way would assume that there's a shoulder, you know, a solid white edge line to be able to, you know, sometimes it's a foot, sometimes two feet, sometimes it's four feet, it can get even wider. But generally, that, that's the whole idea behind, in ASHTO's requirements, is to be 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the travelway. The 10 feet back is, well, if there is no shoulder, if, you know, cars are inching out closer to the intersection, what would that sightline be? Because that's a realistic measurement. And, and so their measurement that they show on this updated plan demonstrates that the sightlines do not cross into an abutting property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On the left side as well, correct?
That's correct. So, so at the last meeting, the 14 and a half feet back did not cross the property to the left, but it did to the right. Now with the 10-foot back, it does not cross either one.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Questions from folks? Yes, Tim?
Roulette 27 Rockwood Road. Where might you be putting a school bus stop?
I don't know. That hasn't come up before, has it?
No. I mean, it's a private neighborhood, and they can't, you know, school buses aren't going to be driving in there.
You know, school, the school buses typically, it's, it's based on the demand of the kids, you know? How many kids are going to be going to school, what school they're going to, the ages of the kids. So it's, it's really dependent upon demand.
But if one, what if there's one kid?
If it's one kid, then, then that's going to have to be kind of dealt with, with the school. You know, where, where do the bus drivers typically drive their routes, which side of the road they're going to pick the kid up on, and are there any other kids in that area along the stretch of Rockwood Road of where they would be picking them up? You know, because they are, they are constructing a sidewalk out there along Rockwood Road. So it's all dependent on, on the demand.
But in that particular situation, again, if you're not familiar with the neighborhood, when you're coming down the road, at certain times of the year, the sun is coming over the tracks, and it blinds you in the road. Now, if you have a school bus stopping at the base of that hill with its lights flashing red, someone may misinterpret that as being the train, and not slow down because they know the road and the train's far up in the way.
Tim, excuse me, I just spoke with Dan, and we do have a, a condition added for a school bus stop. He added that in, just found that out. It'll be one of the orders of the condition to work with the developer to put that in. Yes, sir.
Why are we suddenly allowing a 10-foot where 14 was last meeting?
So the 14 and a half feet back is the standard, standard traffic engineering rule to go by. And that's based on the traveled way, so that's actually within the striped area for, for a car to travel in, without crossing into the shoulder. The information that was previously provided would only show the 14 and a half feet. I could not sign off on it saying that the 10-foot was fine until I saw it. That's why I requested them to provide that information. So I couldn't just say, yeah, I think it's good because you said so. I had, it had to be documented for me to sign off on it.
Just so I'm clear, so if it doesn't meet it at the 14, but it does meet it at the 10?
Correct.
What's the point of the 14 standard if we really just look at the 10?
It would not be wrong if they had presented it originally with the 10.
So again, I ask the question, what is the point of the 14-foot standard if we don't, if nobody uses it?
Well, the, the point is that it depends on the, the actual configuration of the roadway infrastructure out there on Rockwood Road, for example, that if there's multiple lanes, if, you know, in each direction. So if it was a four-lane cross-section, two lanes in each direction, if it was one lane in each direction, depending on the width of the shoulders out there. So you don't, you don't want a car sticking its nose out into the roadway. That, that's ultimately what it comes down to.
Well, I guess that's my concern, is this seems like a slightly sensitive spot in the regard that, that when you're coming from northbound, headed southbound, there's a bit of a curve there. The, I realize it's saying we meet that sightline distance, but it's not by a lot. And then when you say, we've got it on the other direction, we've got a similar problem, and we're going to reduce the standard there, and you complicate that by saying that there's railroad tracks, there's a height elevation and sightline issue there, is what? I question why we would allow the 10 when 14, as you've said, is the standard.
Yeah, it's, it is, it is the standard, but again, it all depends on the main line geometry.
Jason, can I ask a question on, on that point? So I think the, the question and the point here is that if there's a car parked in the site driveway and wants to exit the project site, they don't have to nose into Rockwood, onto the paved surface of Rockwood. They don't have to nose the car in there to see 250 feet left and right, because they can see 10 feet back, and that's, that's enough for the driver of that car to see without going inching into the road, into Rockwood. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is that, in the 14 feet, I'm assuming is this a conservative standard that?
It is, and, and that's where it really comes into play, that they wanted to come up with a general, ASHTO wanted to come up with a general guideline to be able to accommodate for the varying widths of a shoulder.
Okay. Thank you. Tim?
In this diagram, there's a fence, I think, along the road. How is that going to interpret or interfere or help with sight?
So the, on that plan, and, and I'm, from what I remember on my phone, looking at it and zooming in, it shows that the sightline, see that hatched area? So that whole hatched area is what they need to be able to have a clear view of the cars coming, approaching them. So that if that sightline, if that hatched area at all encroached upon that fence, then they would not have met the sight, sightlines. So that the way that it's designed is that the fence is pulled back far enough off of Rockwood Road not to hinder the sightlines.
Jim, did you give us a signed copy of this plan?
It's not signed, but we can provide that.
Yeah, can you provide that? Thank you.
Questions, comments, before we move on from traffic? Okay, thank you. Glenn, are you ready?
I think so.
Okay. Let's give this a try. Thank you.
So lower right, the zero revision date.
And where, when was that?
September 9/12.
Okay. Oh, that was one of those. Okay.
Was it that drawing?
Yeah. I only have, sheet four was utility, five was grading, and seven was.
Correct. Yeah, we only sent the revised sheets.
Which one would have to show that?
Four shows it.
Four shows the same.
Can you see, is there a blue light blinking?
Yep. Flashing right now, Amy.
Okay. And it should. I might have to turn it off and start over, because it was sleeping.
Meeting tomorrow? Is he being a meeting tomorrow? Does he be a meeting tomorrow, 12 noon?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
There it is.
Here we go. Those are.
So do you want to see the site plan right now?
Yeah, let's start with the site plan. So based on the memo I had written back August 9th, the initial item of concern is certain units, as they fall relative to the streets, and it's a little hard to read here, because these are all galleys, but, for example, this elevation of this building right here, because it's on a corner, that side now becomes a, a public front. And there were a number of locations in the plan where those public faces that were the side of a building were nearly blank. They might have had one or two small incidental windows, but otherwise it was just a big face of siding. So one of the concerns I expressed is that any of those buildings that fall on corners, just like any other building that's built throughout the community, when it falls in a corner, it addresses both sides, and both sides are in effect a front face of the, the structure. So the architects have gone back, they've modified the side elevations to incorporate a few more windows so that they aren't completely blank. Again, if we can then jump to the new elevations that they sent, and I believe from what the architect told me, those sheets are identified by an A. So it might be like sheet two, and then there's a dash, little A. So, it might be like sheet two, and then there's a dash, little A.
This is not one of the ones you just sent me?
These would be the ones I just sent you, yes.
The ones you just sent me. Okay.
Oh, great. Oh, I have it.
There are the three files.
I think the two files at the top, Amy?
Yep. I think they're the same, but okay. I mean, I just saved it twice.
Well, yeah, if you can just scroll through, I can tell you when to stop. We'll back up first. Okay, yes. See how it says sheet 04A? So, what they've done, in the initial scheme, these were smaller windows and I believe these windows didn't exist at all. So, now by adding these extra windows, at least when you look at the side of the building at the corner of the intersection, it is a dead face. Since it's up here, we can also talk about, they've modified the appearance of the door. They didn't actually do what I initially requested, which was to have two separate garage doors, one for each parking bay. They felt that the building was too tight to accommodate that, but they've at least made it appear like its two doors instead of a big, long, sort of suburban-looking garage door. I guess if we flip through, so this is the unit As. There's also a unit B that has an A tag to it. Right. So, again, they've incorporated so that the sides of these buildings now have a public face out. Ideally, I would have liked the architect to be able to present it. It's a little odd for me to be presenting their project, but they have at least, based on the drawings that I got most recently, made it. They've addressed it. I think that maybe they could have been a little bit more thorough in their approach to it, but it at least is better than it was. The last item in my memo that they didn't address at all is there are certain locations within the community where the garage door sticks out and the person entrance that's facing the street is set back. And you really, if you're looking down the street, you don't see an entrance for a person at all, just the way the roof lines are designed. I had suggested that they either extend roof lines out, almost create like a porch so that when you're looking down the street, there's a cue that there's an entrance. The architect's explanation, which we heard in the previous project that was presented, is that they really feel that the front of these buildings is the green side, but that's not how people arrive. I mean, New England, we have weather like we have tonight. People pull up in their cars, they're looking for where you get into somebody's house. I still think, I don't think it necessarily has to hold up your review, but I think that they need to look a little harder about wayfinding, how you find the front of these units to get in. I don't know if you have anything to...
I mean, I would just add that the difficult part is identifying these issues. So, I thank Glenn for pointing out these issues. I definitely think there's some value add there. The easy part is fixing it and, you know, we presented the plan, so thank you for presenting our fix on that one.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Yes?
Glenn, in your letter of the ninth, unit, item number three, you talked specifically about unit 15. And you had made a recommendation or at least inquired as to relocation of that unit to a cross from 27.
If you go back to that, if you go back to that site plan, the first image we were looking at? Right. In the previous iteration of the plan, and again, I still think this is a little odd, there was no walk here at all. This is the unit I was referring to. And its front door basically faces into the neighbor's side of their house. They have at least provided a walk to get to it, so it functionally works. But what I had suggested was that they consider relocating this unit, because this in general is very tight, and relocating this would have allowed them to slightly spread things out a bit. And there was the potential for locating it either somewhere in this area here or the other option I had pointed out earlier was that they could have possibly put a second unit here instead of squeezing this one in the corner there. Because this one, I mean, for your, your front door to face into the side of somebody's house, you're not part of the green. These at least arguably all face onto the green. I guess this is the... The country cousin. Again, their address to it was to extend the walk, but I haven't received any suggested alternate plan that would have addressed how to better site that unit.
Bishop, do you want to, is there an opportunity to relocate that unit?
I just want to add one thing before you, you know, the other option, which again, architect's not here, so it's difficult to discuss, is you could modify the design of this unit if it has to stay there so that at least the front door of it is on that face, so it's facing out to the street instead of facing into the neighbor's side of their house.
Is that a solution?
Seems like a really easy solution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think any solution that calls for reorienting the door within that footprint would work. So, we can, we can look at that. I think the other suggestions of moving the unit altogether or reorienting it are difficult because there are competing interests here. We had already talked about eliminating units towards the front of the site, and we went to great lengths to move everything back off of Rockwood so it's not there. So, that eliminates that. And then as far as the rear of the site, we've actually, and it's difficult to discern in this latest plan set, have slightly reoriented some of the infrastructure to accommodate Beta's prior review regarding groundwater mounding, which we'll talk about a little more. But we were able to confirm that there are no conflicts with any of the mounding issues that were raised before. But it all requires making everything fit together like a puzzle, and in that puzzle, that is where that particular unit falls. So, if there's something architecturally we can do to maybe move the door, if that's of real concern, maybe we can do that. But I think, you know, the development team was comfortable keeping that as part of the green even though the door does not necessarily face the green directly. It still has the walkway off of the green. But the note has, we've received the note and we can continue to think about maybe looking at how the floor plan works for that unit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Glenn, is there a way if they went and made that, those two units, 15 and the other one, a duplex-type unit? Could that work by combining those two units there together and sort of re-centering it?
I, that might work, or I think what they ultimately would need to do is to mirror the unit. Looking at the plan, I don't think you can just move the door. Looking at the way it appears to be oriented, I think you'd actually have to mirror the unit and then you'd be able to move the door around the side. But again, I can tell them that there's a problem they need to look at. Their architect really needs to decide how they want to address that.
Okay. Bishop, yes?
Like Chris had said, there are competing interests here because another, see, there are other, a lot of other considerations. The, first of all, this, this drive here, there's a difference in elevation between, this is the garage level. So, there'll be, the door facing this way is going to have, is going to be like at a high, much higher level than the road, number one. Number two, to mirror image it, we may have an issue with the, with the patios because each, each unit has a patio on one side and to have two patios, you know, on, facing each other is a...
The first issue, the comment about the grading, I'm not quite understanding. If the grade for the door works facing that walk that you've now shown, unless this is an incredibly steep side grade, I can't see how it's a significantly different grade around the corner of the building.
There's a retaining wall on that side between the units.
See, that kind, that kind of stuff needs to be on these plans.
It shows a retaining wall.
It does? See, there needs to be a comprehensive site plan that shows all of the features because, now, I never even received the revised plan after the September, not, sorry, August 9th memo. But again, you've brought a walk over there, it functionally works now before it didn't, but it's not a great solution. I understand what you're saying about the patios. That's actually one of my other comments I made where I asked to have the space between each unit. It actually looks like you have spaced the units out a little bit better. But it looked before like some of the patios were literally, you know, like two feet away from the neighbors.
Glenn, is this something that you and their teams, architect, can work on or discuss?
You know, I offered in the memo, I'd be happy to meet with them directly to go over these things. We've, in the past, set up work sessions where, you know, can be during the day, it doesn't have to be a night meeting, but where we sit at a table together, go over these issues. They say, "Okay, yeah, that works," or "No, this is why it doesn't, but we could do this instead." So, that when we walk into the meeting, I can basically say, "Yes, they've done everything we've asked."
Yeah, all right. Bill, is that something we can facilitate?
Yeah. Yeah, if I could follow up on that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. I think we're at the point where that 9-8 revised plan really is the development team's best foot forward, but you have to remember that's still, as you know, in the 40B process, a preliminary plan. So, where we're drilling down on some of these details, it wouldn't be inappropriate for the board to say, "The final plan shall incorporate design changes to unit XYZ that allow for the front door to face the green to the maximum extent practicable under the plan, given all the engineering considerations." But to the extent we want to further refine details like that, I think maybe they'd best be addressed as conditions with reference to this as the plan of record. So, this 9-8 plan is now the plan of record. I think, you know, they can have a phone call on some of these details, and if the board includes it as a, as a condition, that's how we would propose to address it.
Well, I think the, the problem with that approach is that, you know, most boards endeavor to not have conditions subsequent on their 40B decisions that require post-permit approvals. So, you know, it's, you can put a condition on there that says they have to address X, Y, and Z in the design plan and then come back to us with a revised plan, but then, then the board has to review it and approve it. So, it's functionally better to get these kind of open issues resolved at once and not have, if we can help it, not have a whole list of future approvals that we have to deal with. And nor really do you guys want to have that either. You want to have some certainty going forward that you're not going to have to come back to us and have another meeting to go, go over a plan for one house. So, I think ideally, this would get resolved over the next couple of weeks and, you know, I think we're going to have another meeting, I'm assuming, to go through the decision. So, I think we're narrowing these open issues. I mean, I think that's the positive thing here. It's not a long list.
Yes, sir. You know, Chris, I think if this was resolved back in August like we asked for it to be resolved, I might be willing to listen to something like that. But for some reason, the architectural drawings, the elevations, everything Glenn has asked for, has been delayed and piecemealed to him. So, I'll mirror what Dan said. We want this resolved, and if it means moving that unit or removing that unit, that may be what we have to do. But to just say, "We'll make it a condition," no, because it will get lost. It has to be resolved. And that's what we asked for back in August. And if for some reason, we can't seem to narrow down these architectural plans, can't even get responses. It's unacceptable. Really, I hate to, I hate to beat you up on this, Bishop, but this is unacceptable. And I would be, I would be firmly against allowing this to go forward as the plan of record. Absolutely not. I want to see the plan of record, an updated plan that shows where that unit is clearly and not just moving a door. I'll move the unit.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Well, let's, let's get a resolution here. Let's figure out how we're going to solve the problem. Is it a workshop? Is it Glenn talking with your architect? I want to get this resolved.
Well, here, here's the, here's the trick, is that we were, we sort of had a false start on this plan, if you recall. We had several hearings where we went through several major site redesigns that although they don't look complex and time-consuming, just looking at the pieces of paper, they are. And they're also extraordinarily expensive from an engineering point of view. And that puzzle that I was describing, simply reorienting or moving that unit would require an engineering revision and a revised plan from this 9-8 plan set, that at this point, after the number of revisions that we've gone through on this particular plan set, given the false start that we had with going in a direction that we thought the town wanted to go in and ending up in a different direction, I think the development team is hesitant to do another civil, civil plan set to resolve what frankly I see as a minor architectural issue that at the end of the day, Bishop has to market this unit and the unit next to it. And if someone's willing to pay a price for a house, you know, I'm hearing more, no, sorry, I don't want to get on my, my, my housing need soapbox, but that's, that's a housing unit. Someone's going to live there and they're going to enjoy living there, and it's functional. And a lot of people would, would love to have a house like that. So, I think ultimately, that's up to the design team. I think if there is a way architecturally to alter the proximity of the front door to the green, then we can look at that. And I don't see that as what Attorney Hill described as a subsequent review and approval. That's a, that's a design tweak that you either check the box, addressed or not addressed in a condition review. You know, this is, this is not an uncommon dynamic as you get down into the weeds. I think, you know, boards want to see every detail final at the quote-unquote preliminary process, but that's not how 40B works. But yes, there is a back and forth. And I'm saying on this particular detail, given the back and forth that we went through with major site overhauls, I think we've come a long way. And I think we've gone to great lengths to make this plan work and really drill down on the details. So, you know, I was frankly a little disheartened that, you know, the board feels as though we're, we're leading them around by the nose on this thing, but I don't think that's the case. We're, we're there as far as this plan's concerned and as far as our best foot forward. You know, this is, this is the plan of record that we're going to put before the board. If there's, if, if the orientation of this unit is going to hold up the project, then that would be terribly disappointing, given the amount of effort that everybody's gone through to, to get to this stage. So, I think maybe look at the, look at the architectural review in context.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that, I think with specifically those two houses, if, if they were so atrociously bad, then due to capitalism, I think no one would buy the houses. I think ultimately, in my opinion, I think that's a decision up to, up to the developer to choose on how he wants to proceed on that house. And that's, that's just my opinion on that. But I had a question. I noticed on the draft conditions that it says a minimum fire access width of 15 feet to be between structures. Is that a, I was just wondering if that was a fire code issue or if there was something further between that and how close these buildings actually are?
I don't think it's a fire, it's not a building code or fire code issue. I mean, if you have, there may be something in the building code that regulates, you know, your need for automatic sprinklers and firewalls and so forth, and I don't know what those, actually Glenn might, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole body of regulations that deal with how close buildings can be next to each other and when they're, when they are close... buildings can be next to each other, and when they are close, you could have them attached like they have, but you need to have firewalls and sprinklers and so forth. So that provision is just something that I, we've used in the past in other projects.
Mr. Chairman.
A lot of the conditions that I've drafted are boilerplate language that I've used in dozens of 40B decisions around the state. And that's just, it's probably an arbitrary number. It could be 10, it could be 20. I mean, it's, that's a number that feels comfortable so that fire personnel can get between buildings if they had to. But can I just respond to Chris? I think you're asking for a back and a forth, and I think this board has demonstrated a lot of good faith in this project, and I think the board is signaling to you that they're ready to approve a 32-unit project. I don't think they're asking a lot in terms of what they're asking for, in terms of that last unit, being a little more creative about how you're going to orient that unit. So I don't really agree, Chris, with the way you've characterized, you know, this process of false starts and lots of design changes. The way the process worked and the way this process is designed to work is that there's iterations, that there's preliminary plans that Jim provided that didn't have all the detail that we wanted to see, and then Jim provided more detail and more detail, and as we went through it, we got comfortable with the design. And it's not as if we radically changed the design of the project. There were tweaks.
I disagree with that.
Okay, well, we can agree to disagree. But, I mean, I don't doubt that this has cost money. I don't doubt that you've had a lot of iterations of plans, but that's common. That's how the process works.
The difference, though, is that we engineered a preliminary plan. So that one that came in with the application was preliminary, yes. We engineered that plan. We provided the underlying infrastructure for that plan, went to a degree of engineering, and then were told, "The layout's wrong." So just, sorry, I don't think we need to go down that road. You know, I don't think it's necessary. But on this house, okay, I don't mind flexible conditions that recite to the maximum extent practicable, so that when you come back with a solution, you have a reason as to whether you didn't go far enough, or you got to the right point. What we can do, though, is we can get the architects together on this unit and say, either the unit will be mirrored, or the front door will be moved, or a different XYZ layout will be shown on the final plans. And then, when you comply with that finite description, then that's a binary condition, that is a yes or no. It's not subsequent review and approval.
I don't feel like it is that binary. I'd like to know Glenn's opinion on that. Design issues like this don't seem to be black and white to me. I think it's more subjective, and I think that's why I think you're sensing some resistance, that there should be a resolution of this.
I didn't describe it properly, then. Sorry. What I was saying was, we're suggesting tonight that this is the plan of record, all right? To the extent this plan requires changes, I think that you and I can articulate a checklist of changes to the plan, that you can say, "The door shall be moved from the left side of the structure to the right side of the structure." Things like that are--
Yeah, and I agree with, a lot of conditions can be crafted that way, but I think with respect to a house design, I don't think it's that easy to do. Maybe it is, but I would, I think the board would probably feel more comfortable if they had Glenn review the revised house design. And if you're okay with having someone like Glenn, if the board's okay with delegating it to Glenn to sign off on it, then that might be a solution.
It's not a delegation. I'm saying that can happen before permit. You can put those conditions in, but it doesn't have to--
No, but after the permit's issued, you come back with, you want this, you don't want this to drag on in front of the night, right? Is that the issue, that you don't want to go back and change this over the next two weeks?
We want a plan of record. We don't want to reiterate another civil plan. The 9-8 revision is the revision.
All right.
Okay, let me just, because I do have a little bit of a problem with this. There's a reason that there's an architectural review. I wrote a memo back in August, did not get any response at all until I started making calls, and I got stuff, end of yesterday. I got it this morning when I got into my office. There's been a resistance to even addressing, this isn't a new issue I brought up tonight. This ought to have been responded to either as a memo from you or your architect, or as a design solution proposal. So I don't think it's unreasonable for the board to ask to actually see a concrete response and solution to a comment brought up in my memo. Just doesn't seem unreasonable.
And we don't have to have a whole new plan done. This could be done on that house. You can come back to us in two weeks with a plan that just shows that house, that excerpt of the plan, and how are you going to change it?
And again, I mean, I'm an architect. I deal with projects like this all the time. We're talking about maybe an hour's work and then emailing it out to people. This is not a huge--
In an effort to move this forward, if we're talking about redesign or a re-architectural approach for that unit, unit 15, it's not a big deal. We'll have the architect talk to Glenn, and we'll report something to you next time. But as long as we agree that every other issue has been addressed, and we have that outstanding issue.
Yeah, the architect, that's the, I think, the lone outstanding architectural issue?
Right.
Okay.
No problem.
All right. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can we, can we make sure that it's, because it doesn't seem to be able to get cast in stone. Is it, I hate to make you do it, Glenn, can you put together or bill what you would like to review with their architect, submit that to Amy? Again, I'm going to go back to what I asked for in August that we never received. Put that in writing, get it to Amy so that it can be passed on to the board, make sure that the response from the architect is submitted to Beta and to the board, and then then get together to put this together. I will not approve a 9-8 drawing with this on there. I'm one member of this board who will not approve this drawing as of 9-8 if it stays like that. So I want it fixed, or else I will not vote and approve this. Plain and simple. So can that be done within seven days? If Glenn puts together a memo of what he wants to do, where he wants to meet with, and put it together?
No, what can be done in seven days is, rather than go memos back and forth, it's like the architects did work with each other. We'll have our architect talk to Glenn and discuss this issue, and come up with a common resolution, and then we'll report to Amy. But now to wait for a letter from Glenn and then to Amy, and then Amy, I mean, you can do that, but--
The problem is, Bishop, your architect is not getting back to him in a timely fashion. So I have to hold his feet to the fire.
Chris, I did not have any idea that Glenn's going to be here tonight. Otherwise, I would have been very delighted to bring, the architect kept telling me, "Should I be here tonight?" And I didn't know if Glenn's going to be here tonight or not.
We discussed this at the 8:10 meeting. We made clear what we expected. So I know you didn't expect it, but the 8:10 minutes made it very clear what we expected.
I understand.
Plain and simple. This is not a hard subject. You know, I'll give you leeway on renderings. I'll do all kinds of good things. But I will not let the plan of record be inaccurate. I will not.
Okay, I understand.
And we've asked for this. And you're delaying, the whole process is being delayed because of this.
All right. So I will commit to, within the next seven days, I will commit to that, and you can write that down, that my architect with Glenn, I mean, depending on their availability, but I will see to it that tonight, I will send an email with Glenn to make sure that they get together and they address the issue.
I'm sorry. He's a little sneaking up.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right. So that, I'm more than glad to do. I mean, we're talking about one unit. It's not a big deal.
Yeah. Thank you.
That will be done. And you don't have to, you know, approve anything you don't feel comfortable with. We're going to try, make every effort to make you comfortable with it, and within the next week, that is going to happen.
That's all we're asking.
No problem.
Okay.
Questions, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Henry 34. So, on a side note, it seems like a simple solution that if the two units that are in the end that are in question, what if that was created as a triplex like the other ones were, would that allow everything to face the front?
That would be a possible solution, yes.
Okay. So just a thought to throw out this football. But my question is, if something like that isn't able to come forward, and we're, I won't say shoehorning, but we're trying to maximize our space here, are there any assurances that we're not going to take these sort of, quote-unquote, less desirable units and call those the affordables and we sell all the regular, is there any assurance from the town as to that we won't take the ones with the least desirable location and turn those into the affordable units?
Do you know how that works? How the allocation is done?
So ultimately, Mass Housing approves the location of the affordable units, and it doesn't get signed off on in final approval unless Mass Housing reviews it. They identify which ones are affordable, and that's within their jurisdiction.
All right. Did you hear that answer? All right, good. All right, good. Tim?
It's not proposed by the builder, like they usually want to, and then they approve it?
Mass Housing approves it. They review, they don't necessarily pick them. We suggest them. And if Mass Housing approves it, they approve it.
So that's my question. Can we get some assurance from the builder that if, in fact, we're going to have a unit that doesn't face the common as all the others do, that that would be one that would be excluded from being used as the affordable?
No, I will not give that assurance. What I'm giving assurance to is, it will be, the desirability level will be proportionate as one to four. You know, if there are four desirable units, one of them will be affordable. If there are four non-desirable units, one of them will be affordable.
That's kind of the calculus that Mass Housing applies.
This would likely be one of the affordable.
Not, no, no, no. So they group sort of, quote-unquote, desirable together, and then of the desirable class, one of those will be an affordable. And then they'll group the so-called undesirable, one of the undesirable will, so they're put on equal footing and then subdivided. And that's kind of, but it's not an exact science by any stretch.
My question is, I understand the grouping, desirable, less desirable. Who picks which unit if presented to the state? Is that you?
We will present that to the state. They'll look at the plan and say, "Does it satisfy that general analysis?"
Okay. It just feels like that would be the deciding factor on how flexible you're willing to be. I don't care. It's going to be an affordable anyway.
All right, Tim?
Is there any chance we could possibly get an elevation picture of the triple unit and the one, the first one you see coming in since, I've been waiting five, six months now to see what's actually going to be in my backyard and how close it's going to be, because these meetings don't seem to get too far along, and this is just going to get buried again. And it doesn't sound like you're going to have too many more meetings to really go through everything in public.
Is there a front entrance? I think there's--
Yes.
We have the triplex elevation.
Yep. One up, yep. Yeah. Thank you.
I have two. They wouldn't have to be a common driver. You're just pointing out these guys down.
Yeah. I think if you scroll, if you scroll down, there you go.
That's in the inside of the neighborhood or towards Rockwood Road?
It's the inside.
Okay, flip it around. That's the trip. That's the back?
That's facing the street.
That faces Rockwood Road?
No, sorry. Flip it, so those are the garage doors that are facing the interior, the street being the project street, the development street.
Those places are not visible from the rock. You won't see them.
Yeah, I'm looking from my backyard.
No, I just was wondering, you don't see the garages when you pull in, you see their fronts of their houses, right?
Correct. Yep. When you, if you could, if you could see from Rockwood, which--
That's facing--
You're going to see the left-hand unit.
You're going to see the end unit.
Right.
So that's in the front elevation and the garages at the rear. Can we now see, like, the big site plan, and then somebody show me, "This is front, this is back"?
Well, no, they're saying, you're saying that if you're coming up the driveway, you're going to see the first unit, and then this unit's going to be behind it.
No.
I've only seen this plan one time.
Right, right.
Up here. How tall is this building? How far is it from the property lines? Because obviously, there's not going to be a driveway on my side. There's going to be walkways across the front of that building.
You're going to be looking at this.
I'm going to be looking at that.
Right.
And how tall is that? What's the elevation from my backyard? Are you going to put a wall in somewhere, or is that the unit that's going to be right behind me?
There's another single family.
There's a single family before that one. But that, the right-hand unit's directly behind my house. The left-hand unit's on my property line, or the center unit, and the left-hand unit is on the street side. So I'm trying to get an idea how tall that building is from the ground level, and how far up the hill you're going. And the distance from the right hand of that building to, I'm assuming, 29 Rockwood Road, but I could be wrong, and the front of that building to my property line at the back.
Jim, is that information that you can provide?
It's a plan. It's right here.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You know, maybe we could suggest that Glenn, could you add that, incorporate that into the work we're doing, just to get those, get those information for Tim, the elevation from ground level to his unit, plus the distances from the single family to his property line?
Good idea.
It might be the easiest way to do it. Would that be possible? Thanks.
All right.
Are we, are we going to have another meeting involving this discussion? Are we going to have another meeting involving this whole discussion?
Glenn's going to do that and bring it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So everyone's got, is straight on what's going to happen architecturally for next steps?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Stormwater and mounding analysis. Bill, do you want to lead off with this?
Sure. At the last meeting, there had been a couple of outstanding stormwater issues.
Excuse me one second. Let me interrupt you. Could I have a definition of water mounding analysis?
As best I can. Water mounding, when you-- I'm not sure I wanted the lights on.
Yeah, me either. I like that. Other look.
When you infiltrate water into the ground, and you have groundwater at a certain elevation, the groundwater table, as you infiltrate that water, it tends to draw the groundwater up towards where you're infiltrating. It creates a mound in the groundwater table.
Okay.
With stormwater, it's a temporary condition, and as it infiltrates and the rain stops, that mound will eventually dissipate back to the normal elevation of the groundwater.
Sort of like saturation of water in that area.
Yeah. So in simplistic terms, it's almost at that point, it's the water table rises? Yeah, but put it simply, yeah.
Okay.
We know now, and we saved a lot of time before we look at those plans.
Okay, so what are the outstanding issues that--
So there were a couple of outstanding issues. One, we had asked for analysis of a number of storm events beyond the 100-year storm event, the two-year, 10 and 25-year events, which we received and reviewed and look acceptable. The second was the mounding analysis, and I don't know, Jim, if, there were a few changes to the stormwater system, fairly minor, as a result of the mounding analysis. I don't know if Jim wants to walk through those, and then I can respond.
Okay, let's do that.
Probably the utility plan, sheet four, I believe it is. Okay, so that's the older plan. Do we have the 9-8 version? I can highlight on here, actually, where we made the changes.
So that's sheet 14. When did he put the 9?
Well--
Oh, was it in the--
The 9, yeah, the 9.
Okay, I didn't know how those were related, so, okay. I didn't find them in the same folder. Is that there?
Right, so this--
Right, so this is the latest plan. And the beds that we looked at were drainage bed LC1 located here, 2A located here. And Bill had requested that we take a look at the beds over here and we wound up reconfiguring these. I'm just giving you the overview right now. And then the other bed was this one here. So. Going through the analysis, we worked with Dennis Demory from Demory Associates and he provided the September 8th, 2017 letter report and calculations. So basically, the analysis shows that we're providing sufficient separation between the estimated seasonal high groundwater elevation. So that would be a worst-case condition, say like in the spring. And a 100-year storm event. So even with that analysis, we have sufficient separation between that high water table and the bottom of the leaching beds. It's a quick summary.
Yeah, and I, I think just to clarify, there's a design separation between the seasonal high groundwater table and the bottom of the infiltration chambers. The DEP requires a minimum of two feet. In the mounting analysis, again, that area becomes saturated. And what you're looking for is, is that that mounting of the groundwater does not extend into the, the bottom of the, the leaching chambers? So the analysis shows that it doesn't. It comes up very close to the bottom, which is fine in a 100-year storm. And then it dissipates within 72 hours, which again is what DEP requires, that that mound dissipate back to approximately the, the normal seasonal high groundwater table within 72 hours. So the analysis shows that. What I think is missing from the information we got is the lateral extent of that groundwater mound. In other words, it's, it's going to rise up in elevation, but it's also going to extend laterally. And we want to look at that just to make sure that there aren't impacts from that lateral extension, that it doesn't impact anything off-site. Excuse me. In some cases, a couple of the leaching, or the infiltration areas are fairly close to the septic system leaching areas. And we just want to make sure that that groundwater mound from the stormwater infiltration won't impact the groundwater mound that also happens with the sanitary septic systems. So I think that's the, the last piece of information that we're missing. And I think it, I think it's available in the analysis, we just didn't receive it.
Jim, did you catch that? The lateral spread?
Yes.
Is it in the analysis? Do we, do we need to do some more crunching here?
It's one more printout of the mounting calc's that we can provide.
It's something that comes out of the analysis anyways, I think. It just wasn't included in the.
Can you make sure that Bill gets that information?
Absolutely.
Because I think that was one of the outstanding issues, is the lateral spread and how it impacts adjoining properties. We wanted to make sure that we're comfortable with that. And Glenn, just to go back to you for one second, Dan brought up a good point. Tim's comments about, you know, the building being close to his house, do you also do some landscape review and, you know, can you look at their screening and things like that that they've done? Have we done that already? The screening or anything like that?
We've actually had our landscape architect look at it. But I, I think the meeting that was supposed to be discussed at, it never came up, so.
Okay. So we're going to have to get that on the next agenda to look at the screening and what that looks like.
Is there, actually, can I just ask, is there a plan that shows your landscaping improvements, proposed landscaping? Can you point that? Because I couldn't find it. Is it, was it with the August 15th?
Ryan Associates.
Ryan Associates, he made, he made a presentation, submitted a copy.
I just want to find it, my, my.
Yeah, okay. I'm here?
Oh, I see it. It's back from March, right?
Are you busy tonight?
I know.
Is that the March plan?
No, that's the original plan.
Yeah, did you have a?
You notice it has the three, the three, the home one and two, which were moved right on Rockwood Road.
Oh, yeah.
And Bill, did you say you've done a peer review on this?
We have had our landscape architect do a peer review, yeah.
Okay, all right.
This has, you, you guys haven't updated the landscaping after you made the.
If you don't have it, we'll make sure.
All right.
I'll get that to you.
An updated, an updated one, based on.
With the new layout and everything?
Yeah. And I, I will say, as, as I recall, a lot of the screening that was being done on the perimeter of the property was being done with fencing, I, I think. And then there were, there was also landscaping as well on the interior. But I'll get those.
Can you share that with Glenn too, since he's going to look at some of those elevations?
Yep.
As we make sure.
Yep.
But the first question is though, have you, have you actually revised the, the landscape plan after you revised the layout?
Yes.
That's not what she showed, that was.
This is an older plan.
I don't think I have it.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll get it to you. It was presented after we revised the plan.
It was submitted?
Submitted and presented by, by, by Ryan Associates. But.
Okay. Okay.
I'll, I'll be sure you get it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll set.
Can we ask a question about the groundwater?
Sure, go ahead.
Can they identify where on the property those mounds were done?
The mounting analysis was not.
Yeah.
Was it only in the front or was it in the back as we had asked to talk about?
Well, what we did is, we looked at the systems where they were closest to the groundwater table and also closest to the property line, a combination.
Identify them on the.
Focused in, in this area, because that's, that's where the existing groundwater table was closest to the bottom of the proposed leaching areas.
When we had the discussion, I believe we had requested that they do it in the back as well and I think you guys had asked them to do that. Was that not done?
There's, there's only one drain.
I think we were concerned about the areas that there's a significant area for the leaching field in the back, by the rear cul-de-sac. And the topography of that site is it's sort of crests in the middle and slopes both to the front as well as to the back. I, I butt in the rear, I get a, I get a serious amount of groundwater. I mean, I get a lake in my front yard, so I'm concerned about the additional runoff that's going to be coming from there, which is why I was asking for that in the rear as well.
I'll give you a quick synopsis here, but the ridge that you're talking about is right about in this area, the high point of the site.
Exactly.
So it slopes this way to the front and this is the low area where the groundwater is that Bill was talking about.
Yeah.
And otherwise, from this ridge sloping down, we only have this one drainage bed that the high point in the road is actually located about right here. So this portion of the road is going to slope to the front in these chambers. And from this high point, there's just one catch basin with this bed here.
That's the one I was asking to be looked at.
Because we were also.
If you'll, let me finish.
Sure.
We also looked at, there's two septic systems in this location and we did provide mounting calc's on those.
As well as the spread?
We're going to provide that, yeah.
And I just have a question about, we, we were talking about the snow removal, that the snow, that was a snow removal site? So I'm just wondering, when you add six, seven, 10 feet of snow, plus what we typically get in the spring, does that get included into these kinds of calculations where they're going to place the snow from our seemingly big blizzards we're going to get next?
Typically, the snowmelt doesn't because it, the rainfall is a very intense, high-intensity event that happens quickly, whereas snowmelt generally happens over a longer period of time. So it's not going to impact the system and it's not going to have the same impact on groundwater. Whereas, like I say, stormwater happens very quickly and it tends to saturate that area very quickly.
So if we have.
So that's really the critical area.
Snow plus rain, they don't make a calculation for that?
Well, it, it, it accounts basically for the same amount of water.
Okay.
So it's, it's a number of inches that fall over a 24-hour period.
Okay.
And it's a lot of rain. A 100-year storm is in excess of six inches over the course of 24 hours. So it is a lot of rain.
Okay. And then my one last question is, maybe this is for the board. What, what happens if these systems fail? Once this development is in place and these systems fail and the abutters do take on water? How does that get addressed or remedied? Or is that just the abutters take on the cost of fixing whatever damage becomes from that or?
It's a good question, Dan, you want to tackle that?
There are, there'll be conditions in the decision that require that the stormwater system be perpetually maintained and inspected. They have to hire a company that comes out and annually or periodically inspects the system to make sure they're not getting clogged. And that's, that's a condition in our decision. So if that doesn't happen, if, if there's an event where there's flooding and it's obviously a failure of their stormwater system, then the town has the ability to enforce the permit by requiring the successor homeowner association to make those fixes.
Is that a Board of Health jurisdiction?
No, it's zoning. It's in the permit, so it's, it's the zoning board has the authority.
My question is who will oversee, like, so you tell the condo association they need to do it, who ensures that it's being done is my question.
It's a zoning enforcement issue, just like if you have a special permit and you're not complying with it, the building inspector will be the first line to enforce it. But you guys, as neighbors and abutters, could ask the building inspector to enforce the permit just like you can for any other zoning matter. Can I just ask a question on the rainfall data? Which, which source were you using? Is that the NOAA Atlas or is it something older?
Yeah, I, I forget the exact, it's, it's a technical paper that's released and they have been revising those.
Yeah, I thought NOAA, I thought NOAA was the now, the new standard under DEP. The TP, was it TP 55 or whatever?
Oh, TR 55, yeah. But it's, it has been revised. I'll double, I can double check the numbers.
I just want to make sure that they're using current numbers because obviously we're getting more rain now and the new numbers are more like seven or eight inches, I think.
Six twenty.
Can I ask a question regarding, when you test for these, when you test for these? I have, no, I've never seen it done, I have no idea how it's done. But it was a software package whereby you plug in certain factors and, and you can almost play with it. And so, and what I'm getting to is, is there, is there a way you could like almost force us to, to almost blow it up, to see when will it fail? Is it six inches in 24 hours, 10 inches, 100 inches? At what point will something like this explode? And I'm wondering, does anybody look at that? I mean, it seems to me as though everybody looks at it as almost, I may be wrong in this, but almost like the bare minimum. If we, if we reach this point here, we're safe. You know, but just for the heck of it, is anybody safe? If we really push this thing and try to blow it up, at what point, you know, where's our safety margin? That doesn't need to meet some sort of a standard, but what is the margin anyway?
Well, and Jim can jump in, but I, technically, and usually the standard is the 100-year storm event, is, is the maximum storm that's looked at in the analysis. And that, again, that's whether it's six and a half, seven, seven and a half inches, it's a substantial rainfall event. So that's the standard, that's what DEP requires you to look at. If it was a highly sensitive area, coastal area that was subject to massive flooding, perhaps you'd look at the 500-year event. I mean, you could do a sensitivity analysis and keep increasing the rainfall amounts.
Yeah, just, it's not really does it.
Not, not usually. Usually if, if you meet the requirements for the 100-year storm, you've usually satisfied both standard engineering practice and what DEP is looking for.
Yeah, I want to get started. Okay. Bill, is this the landscape plan that, do you recognize that? Is that what you peer reviewed?
Yeah, I, I think that looks like what we peer reviewed.
Okay, all right. So at the next meeting, we'll get a report.
Yeah, and I'll, if you don't, I'll get the comments in the next couple of days.
Okay.
So that you have them well ahead of the next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, do you want to, do you want us to bring up the fact that we just looked at just now and, and there's no, there's no screening proposed on that plan for any of your abutters? There's no vegetation, there's no fencing on that plan?
Here we go, she's got it, right there.
Unless I'm not reading it.
No, there were, there was a dedicated fencing plan as well that shows the fencing.
Why wouldn't that be shown in a landscape plan?
We, because we have a specific plan for fencing that shows the detail as to what exactly shown where.
It won't be clear. So here, here, we, the fencing plan, the details with different lines and number, colors, the, the type of the fence, the height of the fence, it's, we, we do have it.
Okay. I'll, I'll have to go back and check. I think there were additional plans. And this plan notes fencing with a typical to indicate generally where it is, but I, I'll have to go back and check. I think there were additional plans that were part of that set.
So is there any vegetation proposed along the property lines with, with the abutters on Rockwood? Or is it just a fence?
No, just the fence.
Okay.
All right, we'll take a look at that next, next meeting. So Glenn, you'll be back at our next meeting. Landscaping, those are the two remaining issues that are outstanding for our next, next gathering. All right, do you want to start? I know we won't get all the way through the waivers tonight, you want to try to get through some of these waivers? And before we start that, do we need, Chris, do we need to do this?
Yes, it's simple, we have to get a, we have to get that from Bishop.
Okay. All right.
Or ask him for it?
One more question for Jim. Did you address that concern from last time about the, in the hydrocath model, the outlets connecting the systems together?
No, he just has to give us.
Look at that and ensure that all the systems were in fact connected how they were shown on the plans.
We did provide interconnections between a number of the basins where we could, where it made sense, yes.
Okay. Just want to double check.
Devin, what was the question?
At the previous meeting, some of these stormwater management systems were not connected as they were shown on the plans. So Jim just stated that they had gone back.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't think the analysis completely agreed with what was shown on the plans. So that's, that's been revised as far as this is.
And the lateral spread will also show us how it's going to affect the interceptor over there on that abutting property. We should see that with the lateral spread when you provide that, okay?
Okay. Does everyone have their waiver packet in front of them?
Mr. Chairman, are you referring to the draft permit or the draft conditions of approval?
Draft, yes.
I just copied and pasted your, I think, last waiver list.
Yeah.
And I don't have that in Word. Can you actually email that to me later on? Your waiver requests in, in Word format? Because what I like to do is I like to create a, a table that has, you know, one column is the bylaw section, this next column is the request, and the third column is the board's decision on the request. So if you could email me, Chris, that, that waiver list and then I can put that into a table.
I can send you a copy of that. If we're referring to the, I just want to be clear, are we just talking about the waivers? Because I, I know there was mention of conditions earlier as well.
I would start with the waivers because, you know, we've got technical advice here and that's.
Right, sorry, I was just, I was trying to figure out what document I'm supposed to be looking at.
Well, the waivers are at the end of the permit.
Okay, so it is this permit document.
Yeah, I, I just, I put them in at the end. I copied and pasted from your PDF.
Right, I just, I wasn't, I didn't know we were going to be discussing this document tonight because we, we, you know, got a. because we, you know, got a comment, we got a copy of it this afternoon. And I really haven't a chance to look at it in too much detail. And I think, as Attorney Hill mentioned, a lot of the revisions that he had proposed were some of his boilerplate conditions that he includes in all permits that might not be relevant to this one. So, I would just ask to reserve discussion regarding the permit itself until Attorney Hill and I can talk, just to confirm that these conditions are consistent with some of the things we've discussed during the hearing. Because the goal is for the permit to consolidate all of the issues we've raised and discussed during the hearing. And I just saw some things in here that really didn't come out of our discussion during the hearing. So, I just wanted to vet those with Attorney Hill. But definitely, I think it's appropriate to discuss waivers from local bylaws because that's what we're here to talk about.
Are you prepared to do that this evening?
We can respond to the major ones and I think that's what we had talked about doing as far as setbacks, anything of particular local concern.
Do we get a memo from you, Bill, on the waivers?
Yeah. Yeah, I should have a memo dated August 11th.
I didn't see that. Did you see that, Chris?
No.
And Bill?
No.
I never saw that.
We never received it. You got it?
Dan's got it. That wasn't in our packet.
No.
So, we could go through the waivers and this cross reverence, Hill's advice and then...
That makes sense.
Do you want to drive?
Yeah, go ahead. You can drive the bus.
All right. So, the first section is the Planning Board Rules and Regs. The first waiver is the impact study requirement. And it's pretty common for that to be waived in a 40B since we've just spent the last six months basically reviewing impacts and so forth. And that's really a process requirement. It's not a substantive requirement.
Yeah, and Dan, if you wouldn't mind, I think it helps to expedite because it can be time-consuming. If you were to able, if you were able to sort of characterize process requirements in sort of one fell swoop, maybe we can deal with those. Because a lot of these are subsumed in the 40B process.
Yeah, as we go through them, I'll point out what's process and what's... Is that what you mean?
Right.
Yeah. All right. The next one is the design standards for... Design standards for what, everything? Road standards? Is that what that is? 4-1-1 is all road standards?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
So, your advice is it's okay to waive it since we've reviewed the road and we've reviewed the entire project and...
Right. And there's other design waivers, specific design waivers that are being requested, so.
There are in this document?
Yes.
Design waivers, okay. Do the board members want to stop at any of these or do you want to just keep going?
Just, yeah, if anyone has a question, just...
Jump in.
Jump in, yeah.
Okay. 4-9-4, trees. This is a street tree requirement essentially, that trees be planted every 40 feet. I assume that the rationale from the developers that this isn't a road, this is a private condominium driveway and they presented a landscaping plan. So, if we sign off on the landscaping plan, that's basically the equivalent of requiring the street trees. 4-12-1 is a requirement in the rules and regs that trees that are being proposed to be removed be marked and reviewed by the planning board. So, they've asked for a waiver that would allow them to clear the trees without having that review process? Did I characterize that correctly?
Yeah, and this typically applies to subdivisions, trees that are within the proposed right-of-way. There is no right-of-way here as well.
Right. All right. 4-14-6, and this is a design standard, right-of-way widths and alignments. Do you want to explain that, Bill? You're probably better at doing this than I am.
Yeah, again, a lot of these apply to the standard subdivisions where the property is being divided into individual lots, which is not the case with this development. This is requesting a waiver from the width of the roadway, which is typically 26 feet, centerline radius of 170 feet, 340 feet for intersection site distance on roadways within the subdivision. And again, since this is not a typical subdivision and the applicant's provided a site plan that's been peer reviewed, we believe it's appropriate to waive this. Though they won't be public streets, these will be private streets.
So, when I've dealt with this issue in the past, it's common for us to say, well, we'll waive the pavement width requirement of 26 feet, which frankly is pretty wide, but stipulate what the minimum width is going to be. And I think, and this is 22.
22 feet.
22. So, we'll put a language in the waiver decision that this is waived, but that the minimum pavement width will be 22 feet. Does that work for you guys?
So, I think there are varying approaches to some of these subdivision rules and regulations waivers. So, where the project is not requesting a subdivision, it's not required for the applicant to ask for and the town doesn't necessarily have to grant a waiver or address each and every planning board requirement. And that's right in the Enabling Regulations for Chapter 40B. Normally, what happens is, and what we prefer to do, is that the board look to the subdivision rules and regulations to impose conditions, which is what you have in fact done in reviewing the plan. So, what we'd prefer is, rather than enumerating every single line item as far as planning board rules and regulations, you give us waivers necessary to build what is shown on the plan. Because if there's another condition that talks about the width of the road, the plan shows the width of the road. So, it gets duplicative when you're approving a plan, but then you're also talking about conditions. And then on top of that, now I think Attorney Hill is suggesting speaking to, you know, waivers subject to limitations and holdbacks under the subdivision control law. So, we'd prefer that the board grant such waivers as are necessary to build the plan. You know, Attorney Hill can cite the section in the regulations regarding the idea that an applicant doesn't need waivers from subdivision rules and regulations. I think we have a good process here. I think it's just, to some extent, it's duplicative and time-consuming to deal with waivers that are addressed in the plan that we've been talking about at great length. So, you know, I'd like to hear how the board would like to address it, understanding that we have a plan we've been talking about and the idea is the waiver is necessary for the plan. The regulations state that waivers are required from as-of-right zoning limitations. So, I think there might be some conceptual disagreement between Attorney Hill and I on that. But, you know, I'm sure he is aware of how the regulation works.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, our memo was reacting to the list of waiver requests that were submitted by the applicant, so.
So, how do we resolve this?
Well, I don't want to be flip, Chris, but I think you're kind of over-lowering this. This is, there's only a handful of waivers from the subdivision rules and regs. There are, what, maybe 10?
Which is all the more reason to say that, you know, we've waived the subdivision rules and regulations to build the plan. And then, you know, the concern comes in if we're going to do the reservations. Either waive it or don't waive it. You know, waive it to build pursuant to the plan. You know, we can go line by line.
But there are some important standards that I think are worth pointing out in the decision. And to the width of the pavement, 22 feet. I mean, that's pretty important. So, I think those type of things, I mean...
Well, impose it as a condition. We would agree to a condition that says...
It's a condition or if it's in the waiver decision. It's the same thing.
Well, now, I'd rather have it as a condition because now we're talking about a limited waiver. So, the, I'd prefer it as a condition.
I think it's semantics, but...
All right. I'm going to defer to our attorney. That's the way we'll handle it.
Okay. So, that was the right-of-way width and alignment. And by the way, there's a standard condition in our decision, which was in also the Boyd's Crossing decision, that the project has to be constructed in accordance with their final plans. So, Chris is correct that ultimately that is what controls. The plan controls. If they deviate from the plan, and that's our peer reviews job is when they go out there and produce the final plans before they start constructing, that's, the important task is making sure that the final plans match up with the prior iteration that you guys have already seen. All right. Cul-de-sacs, they're asking for a waiver from the 500-foot requirement. And, you know, we've already talked about this. They've actually shortened that road somewhat. So, now it's... Yeah, I mean, it's in this, it's in the memo. The length is 1,230 feet with the cul-de-sac at the end. That's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Cross-sections, 4.17. This is more of a process. It's a submission requirement that the planning board requires this level of detail in its plans. And, Bill, you're saying it's adequate what they provided for your review?
Yeah, they've provided a grading plan which serves the same purpose.
What is it called? U?
No, I say they've provided a grading plan.
A grading plan, okay.
Which serves the same purpose as the cross-sections.
Okay.
The stormwater, can you describe what that waiver request is?
From stormwater design criteria, essentially, it's, the subdivision regulations require a closed drainage system with a series of pipes and so forth. And again, because they provided a design, a site plan design with a full stormwater drainage design and analysis, we think it's appropriate to waive this request. It's been reviewed, so.
So, there was a question that was raised the last time in regards, I believe, to what you're referring to, that there was an overflow pipe that directly flooded the neighbor that's south in the event of exceeding capacity, that that overflow pipe was going to dump onto the neighbor's property. Was that looked at at all?
Yeah, nothing discharges directly onto the neighbor's property. And the overflow pipe...
Do you know what the distance was from the site line or from the lot line?
I don't know exactly. I don't know.
I mean, it looked like it was within a few feet.
We have several. And again, I just want to make it clear that the overflow pipes are designed only for those events where you may overflow beyond the 100-year storm event. It's not a typical part of the system.
The concern is just the elevation with, that their site is higher than the neighbor's site?
Yep.
And if it does, you know, if you get beyond that 100-year storm, that would be readily discharged onto the neighbor's property if you're only a couple of feet away from the lot line?
There are several drainage beds that we have with the overflow pipes and they will discharge in some lesser storms, actually. So, it's not just the 100-year storm. But we have looked at the pre and post-off-site rates. And in all locations, we have a significant reduction from existing conditions.
Will overflow onto the neighbor's property in less than 100 years?
I think we also said during the mounting, the lateral mounting analysis, we want to look at that one more time. This is the northern interceptor you're talking about that goes in the south. And we talked about that last time, that we're going to make sure, because no water can enter that northern interceptor. No water. And that's on that south side. So, one of the lateral analysis was to review that, to make sure that even in a 100-year storm, that water will not enter that property and go into that northern interceptor.
And I think the last piece of that is the lateral.
The lateral, right. So, that's what we'll know next time.
And while we're on stormwater, it's been my understanding all along that Beta has reviewed the plans for consistency with the state stormwater standards. And I believe that was your intent, that you were designing this project in compliance with the 10 standards. Is that right?
Even though technically they would not apply to this...
Technically, they don't apply because you're not within a wetland jurisdictional area. But they are complying with that. And do the town's stormwater regulations essentially mirror the state's regulations that require compliance with those 10 standards? Do we know?
Yeah.
Okay. So, standard number two is, it requires that peak flows not exceed existing conditions. So, that is the standard you're referring to, that they can't cause more greater runoff off-site than exists currently. So, and the conditions that I've drafted in the decision, which is fairly standard, is that what's, the review that's happened so far is a preliminary review, although it's, you know, it's pretty intense. But still, Jim's going to do further refinements of his stormwater plans. And so, when the applicant submits their final plans to the board for final review, there'll be another round of review by Bill to just check everything, to make sure everything is still is copacetic. 4-19-7-4, roof recharge. Are they even recharging roof roof?
They are within the system that they have, yeah.
They are, okay.
They're not separate systems for the roof.
And so, the bylaw requires separate systems and they're asking for a waiver to allow combined?
Correct.
Off-site discharge, actually, this kind of goes back to the last point. Can you explain that?
Yeah, again, this kind of goes back to the whole stormwater system. The stormwater system provides onsite infiltration of the stormwater that's being generated. They don't, they're actually reducing the amount of runoff that comes off the site now. So, this issue is a little strange, or this requirement is a little strange. It requires onsite discharge, but allows off-site discharge if you can't meet the requirements to discharge onsite. So, it's a little ambiguous, but they are, again, they're providing a system that recharges onsite, reduces the amount of runoff in a post-construction condition as compared to the pre-development condition, so.
Do we have the Planning Board Rules and Regs handy by any chance?
I can grab some in the office or get them online.
Do you have it with you?
Have yours with you?
Devin has, yes.
Sounds like Beta is not recommending that this waiver is appropriate.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand. Do you guys even need this waiver?
Well, that's what, whether that waiver is even required, I don't think it is.
Oh, I have the rules and regulations for subdivision?
Yeah, yeah. It's Section 4-19-9-1.
Good job, Devin.
I'm prepared.
Yeah, so the actual requirement, in instances where no lots can be developed within a subdivision because no naturally occurring soils are found within the project site, which would allow recharge of stormwater within 72 hours, the applicant may petition to allow off-site discharge of stormwater. The planning board may waive applicable requirements of Section 4.19, provided that after due consideration, that waiver of strict compliance with the provisions of Section 4.19 is in the public interest. So, I think basically it's saying that if you don't have suitable conditions on your site to be able to contain your stormwater runoff and recharge it, the board may allow you to discharge your runoff off-site. Again, I think because the stormwater is being contained on the site, they're reducing runoff in the post-construction condition. I don't think the condition applies.
It's a kind of a strange condition. I mean, a kind of a strange provision. I haven't seen that before.
So, I say it's...
I would characterize it as, as much excessive, but very conservative in the approach. That you, you know, they're expecting you to recharge it all on-site. And it's, you know, usually the standard is to just keep it to existing conditions.
Right.
It's basically, seems to be a standard that allows the board to waive its own requirements to discharge on-site.
All right, so I think we should just keep it in there, and you don't want it in there?
Again, it's a planning board regulation.
Oh, okay. You don't want any of these.
Well, I think, you know, the point is made by that exchange right there. I think we can, we've vetted the stormwater management system sufficiently, that we can look to the planning board regulations for specific things that we want to point out. If Dan wants to, I don't think we need to go through this exercise in the public hearing. I think this might be excessive.
Well, does the board want to go, I mean, I think the, does the board want to go through the subdivision standards to see how this project compares and understand where it doesn't?
That's what we've done before.
I mean, that's a typical process.
If this isn't a subdivision, then why are we reviewing the subdivision rules and regulations?
Because we don't have regulations governing this kind of project. This is a project that would not be allowed in Norfolk, and so we don't have a set of regulations to govern homeowner association projects, but we have these subdivision standards, which is the closest, the next closest thing to what they're proposing. And that's why it's allowed. I mean, the 40B regulations specifically allow boards to compare 40B projects to subdivision regulations, even if they're not technically a subdivision legally. All right, so 5-2-1-1, width requirements, this is the width of the pavement, so this is 26 feet down to 22. Your planning board requires a seven-foot grass strip and sidewalks on both sides, so they're not providing that. They're providing a sidewalk on one side, is that right?
Not throughout the sub, not throughout the project, but.
Portions of the roads.
Based on what we're showing on the location, so there's a convenient walkway from one end to the other end of the site, but it doesn't necessarily follow the.
And you have walking paths?
Correct.
In other areas, along the green.
And then there's a sidewalk from the entrance to the train station.
Right.
On Rockwood.
On Rockwood.
And that's going to be a separate condition in the decision. 5-2-1-2, depth requirements. Yeah, this is actually a fairly significant waiver request. Every town has standards of how you construct a road with the depth of materials that are used in the cross-sections, so, Bill, you've reviewed it?
Yeah, we have, and again, I think what's shown on the plans for the amount of traffic expected and the class of roadway, I think they're actually meeting the requirement, so I don't think the waiver's necessary.
So this is what we could do.
I, yeah.
My only concern is that I know, and I haven't fully reviewed Dan's revisions to the proposed permit, but I know there's going to be a provision in there, and I think you may have mentioned it, that to the extent anything is not waived, it is going to be enforced. So if something would require you down the line to alter it, as Beta indicated, you know, the existing meets it, if something required less that was sufficient, you know, I think, I think we'd want the flexibility, but I think what's shown on the plan is what's required. That is a condition, so we want the waiver, and the board's requiring us to build it according to the plan. If the plan changes, at least we now have the waiver, and we don't have to talk about that down the line if we're going through the exercise of individual waivers here.
Does one of their spec sheets actually show a cross-section with what they're proposing for the roadway with the depth?
Yeah, it's on one of the detail sheets.
So we can refer back to that, if, and when they construct the road, we'll have someone go out there and inspect the depth of the street to make sure it complies with what they've shown in the plan. All right, earth removal, I guess we require an earth removal permit, so they're asking for a waiver from that.
Yeah, again, the only thing I would suggest is that they provide the board with the volume of earthwork, so you have a, if you're going to waive that requirement, at least you know what volume you're waiving.
Have you given us an earthwork cut-and-fill analysis?
But generally, the site is going to be in fill. It might be excess law months, like.
Similar situation on Main Street. We didn't, it was very balanced, actually, we needed to import some fill, but just there was some excessive loom, and loom cannot be used, so that will be over 500 yards.
Is that, is that a, is that information that you can provide the board?
Because this condition of.
You don't have it now?
I don't know.
The problem is, loom, loom is, you know, varies in depth.
Yep.
So I could give, we'll estimate that number, yeah.
Okay.
So are we going to receive a cut-and-fill, is that what we're asking?
I think we're asking for an estimated cut-and-fill.
Estimated cut-and-fill.
Cut-and-fill is going to be, oh, yeah, we'll give you that.
Yeah. I mean, you're saying it's going to be a balanced site, so if you can give that to us in writing what you're estimating, then at least we have that in the record.
Sure.
Okay, so roadway base, this is more of a submittal requirement?
Yeah, yeah, more typical to a subdivision roadway than a site development.
Right. Then we have the curbing, they want to use Cape Cod berm or no berms? So what is the status of the curbs? What, are they, where there's a sidewalk, are you providing a curb?
Yes, it'd be a vertical curb adjacent to a sidewalk. Some sections of the road are super elevated.
So on the high side, we wouldn't necessarily need a Cape Cod berm, but on the low side, where the gutter is, where the water would be draining, we would, so.
Are these curb details shown on a plan currently?
I believe they are, but we can verify that.
Okay. Are you comfortable with their proposal on the curbs?
Yeah, and the berm is shown on the plan. I think the only thing that may be missing is the vertical curb detail.
So you're proposing a vertical bituminous curb adjacent to sidewalks or granite?
I can double-check the cross-section, but I think it's bituminous.
And then, do we want vertical granite curbing around the radii?
Well, now it says granite curb or concrete curb next to a sidewalk. That was the.
Butuminous berm where there is not sidewalk.
Correct, Cape Cod, yeah.
That you were asking about having, at certain radius, you have, granite has to be there, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and that's fairly common, right, Bill, to have granite around the radii in the curb, the inlets?
At intersections, yeah.
But also around the.
I think the next condition speaks to the curb inlets.
Oh, I understand.
Curb inlet stones.
Are you okay, just before we get to the inlets, are you okay with the granite curbing around the intersection radii at Rockwood?
Yes.
And then the curb inlet stones at the catch basins, what, you're not proposing any curbing around the catch basins?
We hadn't done it on Boyd's, and we were proposing Cape Cod berm everywhere else, if it's, if it wasn't up against the sidewalk or the super-elevated roadway.
You know, one of the compromises that I see with 40B projects is that towns typically waive the granite curbing on the roads, but not around the catch basins or the intersections, so, and I think you made a comment, Bill, that.
Yeah, I think our recommendation here is that, given some of the discussions about the stormwater system and getting water into the system and not having it planned, that it makes sense to have the curb inlets, and they can be transitioned from the berm up to the inlet.
Okay. So the board, what's the board's preference?
Sense.
Keep it? Good.
I think everyone likes that.
So we must have a maximum height requirement of four feet and cemented stone masonry. So you're, the applicant is proposing a different construction of the wall. Do you want to speak to this, or is it?
So what we had put in the waiver request was where the walls would be visible from public ways, and that's primarily at the railroad train station area. We have a retaining wall along that edge, and we were proposing to use the town standard for the stone wall. And then anywhere else on-site, it would be, how did I word it?
Ready rock?
Ready rock or other precast concrete or poured-in-place walls.
What materials have we used at Boyd's?
Just used masonry walls.
Masonry.
We didn't use ready rock.
So just, as I look at the plan here, I, you said along the rail, so I'm looking at this section right here.
Correct, that's the wall I was referring to.
Okay, and what about this wall here?
Again, we are proposing a ready rock type wall, or some type of precast block.
I guess I just, ready rock is fine, but.
We talked about, isn't it Boyd's, didn't we say we weren't going to use ready rock, we were going to use a masonry wall? We had that long discussion.
The discussion.
By using ready rock.
The difference at Boyd's was we had the crossing over the wetland stream, and there would have been the highly visible retaining walls at the front entrance.
Correct.
In this location, we don't really have that. The retaining walls are more interior to the site.
Well, what about the walls that are along the Gross property and the Coin property? Aren't those going to be visible?
Not necessarily from the train station, I don't believe.
No, but from the, from the abiding properties, it would be, right?
Yes.
I think I'd like to see masonry, not ready rock walls. Again, keeping in the nature of the area. We have field stone walls in Norfolk, we don't have ready rock walls. And we had this discussion about Boyd's Crossing, not doing ready rock walls for that same reason.
Chris, do you care about the wall that faces the housing authority?
House.
I guess I would not want to see poured-in-place walls. It would be the least desirable.
Less concerned about that one.
Can you give us an idea of what the cost differential is between the ready rock and the stone masonry?
Five times.
Five times?
And this, the wall that runs along the Gross property is about five feet high? Is that, I can't quite read that.
Yes, it's on the order of five feet or so.
And how about on the backside of the Coin property? Again, about five feet?
I think it tapers down, five feet in the corner, and it tapers down to just a couple of feet.
Dan, do you think it makes sense to hold off on that till we have the landscape plan next week, or next time, just so we can see where the different stone walls are, and then we can sort of maybe, as you mentioned, the one that goes adjacent to Hillcrest, maybe that one can be a ready rock wall, and maybe some of the interior ones can be a masonry wall. But I think if we see the plan, Bill, it would probably help us with that.
Do you guys have any visual aids? Do you have any pictures of what these ready rock walls look like?
Yeah, we looked at them.
This was, as you mentioned, a similar discussion. So I, I think we can get certainty on this as a condition. I think, you know, for our purposes in this discussion, waive the requirement, and I'm sure the board will impose a condition that satisfies the town's needs and the applicant's needs.
Just for clarity, along where Hillcrest is, what was that wall? Similar to the one facing the commuter rail? Was that proposed to be field stone?
None of them proposed to be field stone.
I'm not sure where you're referring to.
The housing authority? The wall that's up against their property?
Right, so that's, that, in that area of the roadway, it's going to be a cut, so we're going to.
Oh.
The housing authority property is going to be higher, we're cutting down, so you're not going to see it from the housing authority.
But you're going to see it inside the.
Inside the property, you would.
And what are you proposing there? Ready rock?
Ready rock there. They can be very.
I really appreciate your concern about my marketability.
I am.
So we will do, we'll do a field stone. Just to, to make papers with Chris.
Get back to those rocks.
All right, so, so you're doing field stone there, are you agreeing to do field stone on the other butters, too? Okay.
Thank you, Bishop.
Playing the buy unit there? You playing the buy unit?
Nope, I just wanted to be right.
Material change.
I'm a big rock guy.
That describes what goes where.
All right, next, street trees. Yeah, so this is similar to the previous tree requirement, these are not going to be public ways, so this is really not applicable. Instead, we're going to be reviewing a landscaping plan, and we'll get advice from Beta on that plan. Low maintenance seating. What's, what's the substance of this request?
Well, I think the bigger part of this request is the regulation that prohibits removal of topsoil from the site, and as Bishop mentioned, they will be removing topsoil, so again, I think it's just a matter of waiving it to allow the topsoil to be removed from the site.
But I believe he said that he was going to provide us a preliminary cut-and-fill analysis.
Yeah, and this is part of that, but it's also, the topsoil can't be used for fill for roadways and embankments, so it's likely they'll have to take some of that off-site, even if, even if the whole job needs to be filled, they'll probably still have to take that topsoil off-site.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
In your opinion, okay.
It'll be good to see the volumes to verify that, but it's.
Just a question, is that left as an open-ended number, or is there like a cap to X number of yards?
They're going to provide a cut-and-fill analysis before the next hearing, Beta will review it and give us their input at the next hearing?
No, I just meant does the board put a cap on, on how much it can?
I don't think we'd put a cap on topsoil, because they can only have so much topsoil based on what they're going to need for grass and for landscaping, any excess to that would be taken off, because they can't use it for fill, we don't want them to use it as fill, so you wouldn't really want to put a cap on it.
I thought there was a provision saying you can't take topsoil off of the site.
The town has a provision, subdivision, you can't take topsoil off-site, we don't want topsoil leaving town on subdivisions to be sold, but here, it may have to go off-site because they can't, what do they do with it? Make a mound? Make a mound?
Think of bringing to the DPW, get your own soils.
No. It's a private development, remember?
All right, streetlights. So, again, it's not a, it's not going to be a public way. Do we have a spec sheet on what lighting you're providing?
We did a lighting plan.
There is one, okay. And that's been reviewed?
Yeah, and that, I think that was reviewed as part of the landscape review, so that'll be provided to the board.
All right, that does it for subdivision regs.
Why don't we, no, why don't we stop there? Tonight, we'll pick this up next meeting.
Okay, so, our next hearing is scheduled for.
It's the 18th, isn't it, Amy?
That's what I heard.
10:18, so we'll continue the hearing on 10:18 at 7:15. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion, please. Yes, sir.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the 25 Rockwood Village at Norfolk comprehensive permit.
Got a question? Question?
I just, my question was regarding the next meeting. There was some discussion at the last meeting that Mr. Bullock was going to be here.
Mr. McGee.
Sorry, Mr. McGee was going to be here to discuss the sidewalks. Is that still part of the plan?
No. What was that?
Sidewalks.
Instead of the sidewalk, Mr. McGee.
Quit pro quo, I think.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, we did.
I don't think we, you know, I don't think we pursued that.
I think we wanted to get details on what he was offering.
Yes.
And I don't know if we did. Did we?
I haven't seen anything. No, I haven't seen anything.
Okay, that's a good reminder, and we'll follow up with him on that.
Currently, the plan is to still have the developer do the sidewalk. You're referring to, at some point, there was discussion of the town doing the sidewalk. That has not been pursued.
Okay.
So, there was no need for Mr. McGee to be here tonight because we're not pursuing that.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
So, they are going to be doing the sidewalk?
Currently, the developer's doing the sidewalk.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the 25 Rockwood Village at Norfolk comprehensive permit application till 10:18 at 7:15 to discuss architectural review, landscape review, the landscape plan, continue with the waiver list as well, and any other new business.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Is that everything, Chris?
Yes, we have any other business.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn the Norfolk Southern Board Appeals meeting of September 20, 2017 at 9:20 PM.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Please support the chairman's draw. He won my.
Never know when you'll need it.